I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order. First on our agendas or prove our minutes from last meeting. We'll move by Brad. Any discussion?
I do have a discussion. Under the River Town. In the voting on the eyes and mace. If we could delete my name because I actually recuse myself. That's okay, I know. And it says that I recuse myself, so that's.
Anything else? All favor? Okay, next one on our agenda is to prove our own voucher. Any discussion? All favor? Okay, first on our agenda is Granger Residence. Uh, I don't know how we're doing.
Yeah, so.
Just before you start, does this? Just a re-up?
No, nothing, nothing's changed, so.
So the other one ran and all?
Yes. Um, I can give a quick synopsis. I was prepared to like talk all about it, but everybody that's here, I think. Yeah, so that I was gonna say, everybody was here. One renewal, I guess I thought you were, you weren't here for the one renewal we did. Okay, so. You want me to just give you a quick overview? Okay, if you have more questions at any point, just let me know. So, we, um. So I'm with advanced kind group, so we represented Granger Development. I think we started back in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, we did a couple of, uh, the lots and then three acre and five acre along Sally. And the front subdivision all set it. It was a lot for remaining connected with the remaining land that he had in the back. We initially, um, were. We hunt and fish together all the time, so that's the whole purpose of this land is to minimize transportation. So we did explore the idea of doing like a wetland mitigation bank or something like that. We have too many invasive species that we couldn't control, but we did put quite a bit of investigation into it. Then, um, it decided to, uh, do something similar to a few other ponds around the road. And there's one over on Sixth Street, and then obviously, it has a big one. And, and just create a, a large pond area of one point nine acres. And, uh, to create like a fishing pool, fishing habitat. The applicant and the majority owner of all of this is from Florida. His wife is from here. And so they come back from Florida. And wherever they go to, he kind of creates this little place that he can go and stay when he comes to visit. So that's the impact. And so there's gonna be a. Three or four bedroom smaller house, um, but it will be a, a house built as part of this, and that's where they're gonna start staying. Um, when they come up. They originally got this approval in two thousand nineteen, I think. And then they were. Upon approval, we had one year to start construction, um, or we had to get a renewal. So one year passed, we didn't have a pandemic within, and everything paused. One of the drivers for this is an unproductive material. And because I've been doing this for so long, you know, I told him, I said, listen, with pandemic and everything, you're gonna pay big money to get rid of this. There's no need for the material. I would recommend you just pause it because it doesn't make any sense and it's completely not affordable. So they paused it, and when that second, that first renewal expired. We were informed, um, that we typically would tell them we'll only get one more renewal. And we also, once we start constructing. We have to have the majority of the site finished, the excavation finished within a year. So it really held our hand to when we would renew versus when we would get it done. So we held off and maybe we had some, now we know we have something. We started talking to town probably two, three months ago. Um, we know there's like traffic issues in Daly Road and things like that, and we had all our ducks in a row ahead of time. So we identified what the issues were and then that's what we're gonna, you know, talk about, but. We put all that on the table and this is where we ended up coming. It was a completely new thing. It was to come back to renew permit with you guys, go through a public hearing. And then, uh, you guys vote to approve it and everything, so. Uh, I think it's, if I understand correctly, it's reaffirmation of seeker, um, because we are under this permitting present impact. And the reapproval of the site plan application. There is no special use permit here. And the mining overlay that was done is zone change still exists. So the only two things that we really need, I believe. Are reaffirmation of seeker. And renew of the site.
Now, the house is gonna be on that parcel. Cause I remember that was some question back in the day.
So there were two parcels, so as I said, when we subdivided, we kept, uh, one parcel and then one. That was attached to the remaining land of more than sixty acres. We have to merge those two parcels because the house, the over top of that property.
Have you merged yet or not yet?
No, so we have not merged because we're waiting for the permits renewed. Because if, for some reason, this doesn't go forward, he's got, he's got two lots that are saleable. And without any more financial investment. So once we know, we'll do it.
And this was all approved by the town board, if I remember.
Yeah, we were ready to go. In fact, we did have a contract and then the pandemic hit.
So keep in mind that, uh, just nothing else expired on this whole project. Letter for like, it's identical, but the site plan expired.
Even the outside permits, though, the D E C permit and everything is still all in place and active.
So there's nothing on your, out of your department that correct, but.
Nothing's changed.
Just the calendar. Not literally the calendar.
Cause we didn't know how far back. We had to go, and they said, well, site plan. Should go back to the planning board. You shouldn't hold a public hearing. Um, and therefore, that's the, uh, advice we gave.
Any questions?
Yeah, we just, um, a, a couple of comments. I know the, uh, hi Kristen, nice to see you back.
How are you?
Haven't seen you in a while. Um, there were a, a few conditions that the town board put on, I think a few. That were by the highway superintendent, I think are, are important to include. And also, um, that the work would be done during quote, normal business hours. Uh, because there's a significant amount of material obviously to be moved here. Um, but those were some conditions the town board had. We probably should be reaffirmed by the planning board.
Oh, that was probably like the street cleaning. Any mud debris, right?
Yeah, well, street cleaning and bonding. Did you say that? Yeah, street cleaning and bonding. Um, at that point in time, when we were starting to have the conversations with it. It was right when some of the thermal stuff was picking up. And everybody was starting to identify that there. There was gonna need to be something in place, but we quite know what. That still exists. And that's still a thing. We have had some discussions of options. But it really is gonna come down to what makes the most sense for this area, because there's, there's obviously a lot going on in this area. And we, uh, uh, we even have some ideas and ways to address it. And we think that would just shake out.
So just so, full disclosure, the town board had not with. Discuss options for things, you know, as a product.
And the, um, excavated material, you found someone, someone off Island who purchased this at where.
Yeah, so, wh- what's happening now because that. All the expenses are up and everything is more expensive right now. So one of the things that they're finding is the quickest to. Cut expenses and the trucking costs, things like that. So it used to be that they would all haul out of a certain pit in a certain location and things. But what they're starting to do is find like areas and pits in different locations to cut the hauling costs. And there's all kinds of, um, federally, um, mandated and projects happening right across the subridges. Um, this spring and into next year. And then you've also got, um, the Niners all storage side, that one's gonna be going. Uh, there's a whole bunch of them going that. Are, are a big deal around here, so.
And the mining district covers all that, but like that was all set up. So we don't have any real change in that at all.
Yes, and that does not have to be renewed. That was a town board action.
Another discussion? So how are we wording this? Just, we're just gonna re-up?
I was gonna say, it probably a recommendation to re, because you're an advisory board, recommendation to reapprove the site plan. You know, as presented. I don't know if you wanna get involved, it's on board conditions, you know, that you could, you know, you could, uh, uh, reference. Uh, maintaining the prior conditions, you know, something.
Recommend to reaffirm the site plan. And include the town board previous approval condition. Does that make sense?
Carly, did you get that? Am I working tonight?
And, and I would also say to reaffirm seeker.
Well, it's the town board is the state, this, this board is not the seeker agent, the town board.
Because you guys usually recommend.
Do you wanna read it back to us just to make sure?
I'll recommend site plan approval and include town board previous conditions.
So by Brad, second?
Second.
Mr. Andy? Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, you're awesome.
Thank you, everyone.
Good seeing you again. Okay, next on our agenda is, uh. The local law and then, and the bed and breakfast. I don't know how you guys wanna attack this. First off, when I went through it. Wait, page, page one, it says tourist home. Well, we're not supposed to have any tourist homes, I ran out. So there's multiple references to tourist homes. Which I think should all be stripped. It's, it's goes throughout the whole thing and keeps mentioning it here and there. So that's one thing. And then, um. It says tourist or transient on the first page. I think tourist should be removed, no? The whole tourist thing should be bed and breakfast instead of the tourist. Right, and then in our code. Which is four oh seven ten, which they refer to when here on, on the very first paragraph. There's a bed and breakfast. And it looks like they're changing the mount. But that language should still stay, but some of it's not the same. So tourist home should come out and the bed and breakfast should go in that spot with the definition that's in the code already. But we're gonna be changing. The bedrooms and the amount of people. Cause that's what they're asking for here. Three bedrooms and not more than six. The current code says five bedrooms and ten. So, we're gonna keep, I think the. I don't know how, how to go about this. I mean, it's very confusing here.
Well, I think the three and the six is the.
Where you wanna be, so upfront, we're gonna say bed and breakfast, I think we should just. Take the tourist thing right out of there, because the bed and breakfast is up at the very top.
So, so just back to zero before, before you wanna go over. So, I, I don't remember the date on that. We wrote it. Is there a date on it?
It's just two twelve nineteen?
Yeah, so that is the very first draft of that law written in two thousand nineteen. Well, I almost got shot in the head when I borrowed it out. But now I control the shell, so there it is. And nobody's ever looked at it, nobody's ever questioned it, nobody's ever checked it. Um, it, but it, it represented a lot of the thoughts and what was going on, how it should minimize the bedrooms. We should keep a, a little better eye on the parking. And, uh, how we should be able to enforce, uh, bed and breakfast because.
Can I ask a question about the parking? Why is the parking always been this major issue? You have a driveway in your house, but that's just to make up if it's your car or somebody who's staying there.
Cause it's gotta be on your property.
Yeah, but if it's in your driveway, what do we say?
Well, the pro, the problem that we ran into was how do we know where their property line starts? Cause a lot of Grand Island. But a lot of their driveway is in the right way. Like if you come to my house, I got half my driveway is in Erie County's right away, but it looks like it's my driveway. So can we park in Erie County's right away? And have a, and have a bed and breakfast? So the deal was is they have parking either in their garage, alongside their garage, or out of the front yard setup. That was the program. And that seemed to be okay with everybody was doing this. Is to keep their cars, you know. Not have all these cars in front of your house, like all those.
I mean, there's plenty of houses that have cars all the way out to the street that it's difficult to stand.
So, so if we go to page one.
One of the promises, you, we don't want to progress on the side.
That's what they said unless it's locked in the sidewalk.
So that's, that's what we.
That's one of those things that aren't really enforced here, you know, like you go in city, you block the sidewalk. Big difference.
So I'm gonna do it this way. Page one. We understand that they're changing the bedrooms and the amount of people. We're gonna remove the tourist transient. Thing altogether because.
I think that was just a carryover from the original.
Yeah, well, let's just say we remove that section.
But I think, I think the transient part should still be there, Dave, just the tour.
To take out the word tourist in front of transient?
Yeah, right, right.
That line there?
Yes.
Okay, did, did you get that, dog? Okay, we're just taking the word tourist off of that line. Tourist home, we're gonna strike that whole thing. And then the next page. Uh, anywhere where it mentions, you know, tourist homes, or, you know, we're, we're removing. I'm going all the way down.
Just a, a comment on, on number three there, Dave. Where an owner may not have owned more than one. Bed and breakfast in the town. I just wondered how that came about and if a couple perhaps owned. A, uh, bed and breakfast and they had two of them, then the husband or wife or whatever. Could be in one while the other person was in the other.
That came up on, when the tourist thing was going on, Dave, that somebody on East River said. Let's not say names. I, that they were gonna say, well, I'm living in house A and my husband's gonna live in house B. These things, so this is to say. You have to live in the house that you're renting. Now, how, how do you? How do you figure out who owns what? If I, I'm in one house and my wife's in another house.
Gets away from you buying these properties that you're not actually staying.
That's not your primary residence.
So the ultimate goal is chaperone visit. That is the ultimate goal. That's what a bed and breakfast is. Tourist home is an unchaperoned stay.
Okay, so that's page. The next page three. Pete, is five hundred thousand dollars enough liability for the town?
That don't work for us. I mean, that's, that's, we know that there's, there's, so we know there's at least X on the property.
Yeah, but if you're, the towns allow.
That was pre-COVID, though.
I mean, generally nowadays, like, you know, in the construction business, a million bucks is minimal.
I was gonna say, I tried to rent a gazebo on the island and they wanted a million dollar.
You can absolutely recommend whatever you'd like.
I, I would say number eight should be bumped up from five hundred thousand to a million. And, and like again, like section four says tourist home. Arlene, you're gonna have to maybe take a little time to roll through this and remove the tourist home things.
And I'm gonna tell you this, it's not a fire trial.
Okay, then I get to see. On page three. And that's where it goes a little nuts. It says. I think the people are wrong. It says on the first part, page, three bedrooms and not more than six. Transients, but then on this page it says. Number three says. Six persons or twelve non overnight visitors. Excluding kids under three of age, the total. Bed and breakfast facility, including, including transients and their non overnight visitors should not exceed eighteen persons. So six people are, are renting and staying at the, at breakfast. So, and I can have twelve buddies come over and we're all gonna party in the backyard?
So the thought is, is you go. You rent a, a B and B and you come to Grand Island, you have family here. And you wanna host a nephew's birthday. And have that, that's why it's a, a non-staying. You're going home that night. So we don't, we don't want a frat party. You know, and, uh.
I mean, that was the issue with. The Airbnb, the short-term rentals we had, people renting the house. And having parties there. Graduation parties, whatever.
Okay, so two is, so C two, I'm okay with. Now, C, C three, the.
Just on that, on that point. Would that mean that there could be twelve more cars that would come to that place? I think that, that's a bit much.
Yeah, but that's a, a bed and breakfast. It's not, you, you're renting a bed and breakfast somewhere to stay, you're not. It's not a, a banquet hall.
Make any recommendation you'd like.
I think, I think that should all come out. I don't think you have any of those non overnight visitor. I think it'd be the people who are staying there.
What if you had like a small wedding party, you know, like a couple people and you had some guests come over and you had a party up close? Can't do that.
Wasn't that the thing? Was that with the tourist home? They were having parties. And they were burning tires all by.
Well, it was, it was people out with the motorcycles that came.
But I guess, I guess if I was there and I have to be there as the owner. I guess I can control this party regulation.
Again, it's a chaperone visit.
So now back.
But you guys could, listen. I'm not, recommend whatever you'd like.
But if it's only two of you, you can't have a full twelve. It goes on how many people are renting the house. Yeah, the way that word.
My other question is, who's policing this?
So now, when we do the parking, it was always one parking space per rented bedroom. So one parking space per, per up to two guests and then. Two, honestly, parking spaces. With three guest rooms, so now we only need two cars for three bedrooms?
I think that's the way it reads, yeah.
Two parking places for a bed and breakfast with three guests.
So if I'm renting out three rooms, I only need two parking spaces. Where's the third person gonna park? Well, what, what if this? If, if me, if me and you are gonna rent a, a, a room and we're gonna bring two ki, two kids with us, we only need one car. But if you're renting the room and I'm renting the room, the names from the room. And we're not all together, we got three cars. That's three cars and you only have two parking spaces. So shouldn't it be a parking space per rentable bedroom?
That's, so that's clean.
That's how we have.
That's clean.
So we're gonna change that.
So before the parking, so the thing is, we don't want the parking spaces tied directly to the occupant, the number of guests. But, I, I, but attaching it to per room is not so bad, you know?
We're just gonna remove B then. Leave A and remove B.
I don't know, I, I sort of like the idea of minimum, keeping it to two cars. Even though there's three bedrooms, because. If, if, if you gotta, if you think about, um, a bed and breakfast and a, uh, two people own it, they probably have two cars. So that means we're gonna have four cars or five cars in. In that driveway, that seems a lot to me. Uh, I'd like to keep it to four.
Well, look at the one that was, uh, the last lady that was in that was gonna bump it from two rooms to three rentable rooms. So under this scenario, they work, if they're rented three separate people, where does the guy park?
So if, if, if this, if the third room's rent occupants don't come in one of those two cars, then you can't rent a third room.
So you're saying it max, maxes out at two, two spots.
Right, it gets two, you get two spots.
So I'd have to rent one room to person A and two rooms to person B.
Or, or they Uber or something.
Well, they have, they have three cars, they're gonna bring them over and work with the owner and say, we just parked behind you. They're still gonna park.
Right. It's the same, again, so however you wanna word it.
Shouldn't be a car to a room?
A car to a room is pretty cool.
And then we require a third. So, yeah.
Alright, so then we're gonna, we're gonna, at this point, we're gonna kill B.
Well, even one doesn't cover it.
One onsite parking space for bed and breakfast with up to two guests.
It should be one onsite parking space for each.
Rentable room. For each rental room. Did you catch that one, Arlene?
Well, I don't even know that you say rentable room, because.
No, you're right.
They could just say, hey, the rental is three rooms. And that's one rental. It should be one spot per.
Okay, you got input on that?
I guess just one spot for each guest room, I guess is what we're saying.
Yeah.
One spot, one spot for each approved guest room.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yep.
Four.
What, what did we decide on C two, uh, for overnight visitors? Or, or non overnight visitors?
We were leaving it.
Yeah, to me, that seems like an awful lot of people that could be at a neighborhood bed and breakfast.
What's the genesis of this? Just because we've had a lot of people come through with. Bed and breakfast requests or?
Not really.
I don't think we have that many.
This was way back when. That this was written nineteen, we saw a lot more than.
This doesn't even make sense. Where, because it says on C two. Maximum overnight occupancy. Plus six additional people. So that's six and six, that's twelve. Or twelve non overnight. That means nobody's staying there.
Right, there's that extra people are just non overnight visitors. They're just.
But it should be. Or sticks over sticks. It should be or sticks non overnight visited total. That would make twelve.
Well, as it, it says in the lab.
Oh, so yeah, it's twelve total, that's the max you can have.
So eighteen people can be there. Uh, only six can be there overnight and other twelve.
But first, maximum overnight plus six. So it's six and six. That's twelve, then it says, twelve.
Are you thinking maximum number of non overnight visitors should be just taken out of there? Because it doesn't. Then it describes it after that. Okay, so let's just take out two.
If eighteen is acceptable.
Maximum non overnight visitors, or we will take that line out.
Like the map just says that up.
It says you can have six people staying in the rooms. But you can have twelve overnight visitors total, non overnight.
Yeah, so you could have a total of eighteen.
Plus six additional persons, that's only twelve.
Right.
That, that, that's not eighteen, so the math is just wrong here somewhere.
So I, I guess we just need to decide if we want total. Twelve or eighteen, because if you have only two people staying. Sixteen.
Well, does, not to confuse this more, but, um, we're talking about. Uh, six additional persons, which would be three bedrooms. Is the twelve additional people appropriate if there's only one, um, bedroom?
Well, it says it's calculated based on. Hold on, it's calculated based on the, oh, the maximum overnight occupancy of the bed and breakfast.
So if we say the max is twelve. So if we say the max is twelve.
Right.
Two people staying there, you could have ten guests. If you had six people staying there, you could only have six.
If you have one bedroom, can you have twelve people?
What's overnight?
I'm sorry, sir, we're not allowed. That's okay, sorry.
Good point. Because overnight. Four in the morning. That's still night, or that's still. I never went to sleep.
Five hours.
So what do you want to change the twelve, the eighteen down to twelve? You know, so I think that's reasonable.
I, I think it's reasonable too, and whether it's a one bedroom, two bedroom, or three bedroom, a maximum of twelve, and let them, let, do the math from there.
Okay, so we're gonna go, C two is gonna say. Six. And six non overnight visitors for a total of twelve people. So six, six and twelve, where it's now six, twelve and eighteen.
Almost three hundred and three. Okay.
So when you invite all your friends and make sure you get some young youngsters.
And Tim's that party animal that's staying up till four AM.
So then we're around.
Alright, so.
The non overnight visitors have to leave. Before, what was it?
Okay, we, we're at, did you catch that early?
Well, one of the ones said eleven to seven, I was actually gonna point them out, because I looked it up.
Says ten to six. I always remember the understanding that. I thought the noise thing was started at seven, Jen, but I might be wrong.
Yeah, I'll go.
Like, like construction, we're gonna be down there like seven to seven in one. Okay, number four, section six. Is the penalty things.
Yeah, so I, I was gonna say. These are stricter penalties when the guy that carjacks a car.
Well, I guess what, what I have in this board.
I can, I can rob your car or not put prison for this line.
You're not robbing a car.
Oh, well, I know. I'm just saying.
I mean, I, I see the first, the first, second and third offense. Like, do we even want a third offense? I mean, if you're.
We don't want first offense.
Right, shouldn't it be the first offense and then, you know, okay, you get one more chance after that, and then we pull your, your.
Is it in the, okay, well, they have to renew every year, so it's per year.
Right. So if I start in January, I don't follow the rules of by June. You're gonna hit me with my first offense, and then, two months later, I'm doing the wrong thing again, and now you're gonna hit me with my second. Offense, and then two more months later, you're gonna hit me with my third offense, and then the year comes out.
Three strikes, you know.
You want the three strikes?
I mean, it depends on what the, the offense is.
Well, I, I don't know. Without putting anybody on the spot, but I know there's definitely issues.
Well, there's always issues.
You know, that they're not keeping the logbooks and they're not, you know, doing what they're supposed to do. That's underneath your, you know, your program.
But again, they've gotta have some teeth.
Then again, I'm asking who's policing?
Pete, how was? Or Casey, how was? Pardon?
They're definitely following us to enforce these rules.
Okay, so how does the problem come to you?
They're getting a complaint from your neighbor.
The neighbor complaint. So I would call up and say, hey, they're renting the next door or bed and breakfast, and they're out there hooting and howling, and then got a big bonfire going at three o'clock in the morning.
Very lucky morning, it wouldn't get us, but. I'm the one who would hear about it.
That was the same mess we had. We had the same mess with the tourists.
Only, yeah.
How do you enforce it after Friday at five o'clock, between Friday and Monday? How do you enforce it?
Yeah, the police aren't likely to arrest everybody. Right, that's just not gonna happen.
They're not gonna.
People are just sitting outside of the bonfire, that's.
Right.
The noise ordinance is if I have a generator.
Well, well, of course, so that's why there has to come guardrails around what they can.
So do you like the third, the three strike rule, or do you want to do a two strike rule?
If it's on the same offense or something like that, if it's a constant noise ordinance problem, then that, if it's uh, too many cars and we strike you again for that problem. If you're not keeping up your books and you, it's again, it's two strikes on the same thing and that's, then you know, that's my law. And it says on the second offense, the license would be revoked for one year. So then they'd have to reapply after one year. And then, what do they start out with, if they start offending again, if it is the first offense really the third offense?
It would start over.
So how do you get to the third offense if the license?
Three and, and the, the term of that license. The license is only for one year, you have to re, you have to, could have reapply.
It seems like the second offense, they could, they could revoke your license immediately upon the second offense.
Okay.
People years up, I don't know, is that? Do you interpret it?
Renting rooms without a license count as an offense, because that, that's the way to get the free, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I think one thing you guys missed, and we just dropped, the seven six here. Page, uh, page two, page two. The condition of any license for bed and breakfast, the owner must consent to a minimum of two inspections by the town, by the town police department. First calendar year. So we put that in there because the top, the code enforcement works eight to five, if you will, or whatever. On Monday to Friday, and most of these problems show up on a weekend. So we, we uh, enabled the town police to go there and say, you're in violation.
Okay, so the town police can go there and say, it's not all your legal noise requirements of bed and breakfast.
You're only allowed three, you got, you got. You know what I'm saying? So that's, that we wrote that in there, so that, because we know the code enforcement does about twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, so, so we had a different uh, avenue to.
So under Casey's point, three would kick, C would kick in if my license is revoked and I'm still renting. Then three would be the third offense.
That would be, that would be, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any? Okay, so. You wanna make a motion? Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, there's the word licensing and the word permitting, and right now, those are the special permits, but then we keep referring to where kind of your license, your license. So I think we should take. One, if it's a license or permit or whatever, so.
Well, the code requires a special use permit, and then the operation requires a license. Two different, distinct.
So I think the fact that the word kind of interchanging kind of between license and permit and throughout.
You wanna put license slash permit on all those spots? So then it covers both, like Bob said.
Who wishes the license, is that the town?
Yeah, courts, courts officer, who's the voice?
So if we, if we.
But they, we can't, we need the special use permit.
Permit. All the spots that covers.
Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Right, that covers both.
Permit and the license.
Permit slash license.
I don't know if you can do that.
Well, are we, yeah.
Because E says license provisions specifically for bed and breakfast, which we're at, uh, E, page two. Page two, I don't think you can throw the word special permit in there as well.
Yeah, could. Bed and breakfast isn't approved, approved and permitted you from the most popular, like, to me, because I know it's a special permit.
Especially if permit doesn't get renewed every, the licensing.
That one specifically, I think it's a lot of the special use permits are annual removed. Okay, so we're, I, I got lost, no? Casey, what did you just say?
Taking another difference between special use permit and the license, the license gets renewed every year. Don't make such a different use permit, but.
Most of them do, that's, they do think about them, there is a time to do them, so they're, for the most part, they're annuals.
Yeah, they, they have an annual, be up, if you will. Right, just also like a little gas station come in for his special.
So it's gotta come for you, for you guys on the initial. Once you receive it, and you, you don't violate it, then it reduces to the town board yearly.
It's a, it's an automatic renewal.
Well, as long as everything.
Well, not automatic, I mean, it's.
For inspection.
It's on your calendar automatically for a renewal, and as long as there's no issues, you guys normally.
Well, it's not, it's not, let me say it's on code enforcement to inspect prior to renewal.
Okay.
Okay.
One quick question, Pete, will this be all redone and sent back, or are you just trying to?
So, again, this is two thousand nineteen, it was, twenty-four, it's five years. I want you guys to get it exactly how you want, and then recommend.
So can we put the motion in and then?
Motion, while you're not motioning, I'll be table till next meeting.
Okay.
And make the revisions. And then read it next.
I have just two things, under, on, on page four, under thirteen. Um, I'd, I'd like to have thirteen also mention appropriate smoke and heat detectors.
With the uniform fire prevention, wouldn't that cover smoke detectors?
I, I think, I would, I'd like to see it highlighted. Um, you know, yes, the uniform fire protection and building code does mention that. But I ju- just say, including appropriate smoking, smoke and heat detectors.
That would be, yes, enough.
It goes, it goes without saying, but it wouldn't hurt the list.
And, and the other part, I wondered, under, and Pete brought this up. Where it talks about the town and the police, should we add the fire department in there?
Um, so, Dave, my only question with that would be, do they have any authority vested by the town other than to save people? You know, like a, I, like a, so a police department could issue a citation or something like that.
You know, so. Wanna be calling the fire department there, and a fire break out someplace.
Right.
And they're over at some bed and breakfast with the bonfire.
Right, 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 yeah, so.
I, I think the uniform fire prevention covers smokes and heats, but if we wanna word it, we can add it.
Well, it's not, I mean, I just leaned over inside the P, I said, well, on top of that, then nobody said see you other time. I think if you start making a list, you're gonna trap yourself in leaving something out. So you're better off.
Client statement. Uniform fire prevention and building code, so building code would be the smoke and carbon. And fire prevention would be smokes and, and heat detectors.
Now, it's talking about the certificate of occupancy.
So we only need heat detectors and new garages, so it's unlikely they'll ever come up in a bed and breath.
Right.
Yeah.
So if I come, if they come to inspect your unit or your bed and breakfast, they're gonna check your smoke detectors, like carbon detector.
Okay.
You don't need a heat detector because your kind of grandfather didn't.
Cause that's a, a new building.
So you don't need that. But they will inspect the other stuff and make sure, and to make sure that you have a certificate of occupancy on the property.
A clear assurance and a safe exit would be the big ones.
Which is part of this.
And it posted exit plan, correct?
Well, it says by evidence by a certificate of occupancy permitting such use, so. Is not permitting their use for a bed and breakfast.
Would require extra, because really to code, you're that, you're not requiring above and beyond for the bed and breakfast, are you? I mean, you really gotta have. The set of code smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors in your house anyways, right?
There are some things that are ab- above and beyond, the, the smoking, and, and C detectors, why not?
So it, so what I guess it's saying is, so if you go in and you're getting the permit for a bed and breakfast, are you actually requiring? Extra above the code now that it's a bed and breakfast?
Right, I, yeah, I would think exiting could be significantly different. You know, exiting requirements from upstairs, upstairs, uh.
So, fair assurance and something would be required on a typical house, but it isn't a bed and breakfast. Uh, making sure that people staying there, because they're not ordinarily there, that's probably the first time they've ever been, making sure they know how to get out and that's. So there are some things to note, typically, it would be the same thing as a regular house.
Something that's not listed on there, but, see, it came into my mind a few months ago, we never talked about it was a basement bedroom. That there was an exit to the outside.
That would be a C of O, though.
Are we, are we wanna cover, just make sure it's not be covered too much?
So what is, what is town code on that? Because I know the state's gone back and forth. Because originally it was in a bedroom, then it was any habitable space, then it went back to a bedroom, so where are we at?
So the town code, um, it went to. Any habitable space in the basement needed a, uh, an exit window, a safe window, so that, um. They didn't make that sort of retroactive. So, if you already had one, it wasn't required, but then they went ahead and this version of the code and basically said any, any space needs to have a.
So now we're back to any habitable space.
Any habitable space, but it, the, every bedroom also has to have its own egress. So if you have one bedroom down here, egress can be in there, and that can be the only egress for the basement, but if you have one, one bedroom, each bedroom has to have its own egress.
Interesting. Yeah, well, the nightmare of that whole thing, got off a little bit, is that every municipality defines a habitable space or something.
I get it. We're gonna, we're gonna.
A bedroom and a bed and breakfast, there's no question.
Bring this back to yourself, David. We're gonna make a motion to table.
Just one second, number thirteen is being left, if you understand?
I'm okay leaving it as is, that's fine.
Okay.
I, I still think that with that line, the way it's written about as the certificate of occupancy permitting such uses. Alright.
As evidenced by.
Yeah, well, I think that gives you the other thing like that there was a.
So you wanna take permitting such use off the last three?
On a single family home, you give your certificate of occupancy when you're done building it. You're not, you're not coming back to, it's not a multiple dwelling, you're coming back every three years and reinspecting it. The certificate of occupancy is from when it was built and it's done. So that certificate of occupancy doesn't give me any permitting of any use for a bed and breakfast, I don't understand why.
So you wanna take the last three words off, permissions, just.
Performance with the uniform fire protection and building code, very.
But, but to get those, you have to have a single, to be able to live in the building. So you wanna take off the last three words of number thirteen.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, take off the last three words of thirteen. Okay, so we're gonna make a, I'll make a motion to the table. We'll have this re. Re-done. And come back next meeting hopefully. Did you ever find a thing?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read about how it happens.
Okay, next is communications. I'm gonna go receive and file. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are you made a motion to approve?
Yeah.
No, you seconded by. Any further discussion? On favor?
Hi, hi.
Okay, next is communications, I'm gonna go. One, two and three, received and filed, Jen, I wasn't at the company, do you wanna tell us what happened, is that okay?
Yeah, we just went over our homework for seventy twenty-four, um, what we wanna work on, we asked all of the, um. All the other advisory boards if they could go back and look at their matrix and the, along in the master plan. And to see, um, what goals and objectives they have that go with that, and just to report back to them, and some plan as to what our goals are for twenty twenty-four. Um, they're gonna be updating the recreation master plan slash parks plan. Um, from the ninety-two, we had a grant for thirty thousand dollars for that, so they're putting a board together, um, right now. And they haven't had the first meeting yet, but it's gonna be two members from Parks and Rec, two members for economic development, two members from CAB. And, um, some people from. And um, some people from parks and from um. Yeah, a whole group of, there, the, a good array of who would have some say on that, so that's gonna start going.
How does that tie into the um, the other committee that wants open space?
Yeah, what they did is they got, kind of got a little um blurry and as to who was working on what, so what they did is, if you heard that every. But there was an open space plan being, which is being redone, they decided to divide it into two separate parts. Parts, so the um. The parks and recreation is one section, and that's what they're calling the, they keep changing the name. The um. Recreation master plan, that's what they're calling, and the other one is the natural resources plan, so CAB and. Some of it, um, they already started writing up an RFP for that to get some money for it, but they're gonna start doing that, so they. Started in organizing for that, and we, the other group, which I'm in that one, we've kind of started organizing for that. Um, no one really met and decided what we're doing and where we're going with it as collaborative, so we're all just kind of laying the framework out and. Um, that's what. Going out from there, and then um still talking um. With the town with P D D mixed use, trying to get a definition for mixed use within our zoning code, um, I know that's on Pete's. Um, high radar.
It's almost done.
Yep, so that. You'll probably have it to. Here or wherever, before we'll get to that or whatnot, but besides that. Um, oh, and the L W R P is almost, um, it's at the state right now, right, um, and waiting to be approved, so, um.
We got a few more things that we went house.
Yeah.
We're in predominantly, it's has to do with legal, so we have to, we have to do a few. We have to have a couple of public hearings and a couple of different things, uh, cause recent zoning change, and even though it's public lands. Um, owned by land conservancies in the town, they still need to understand how you rezone that. You know, to open space, even though that's one of the.
Well, it's not public land, it's land conservancy.
Yes, the land conservancy be the private, and even though they wanna keep it as open space and we're fulfilling their wishes. That's illegal, so that's where we're kind of.
It's on our unfinished business, so I, I mean, it's off our hands more or less to them, but. Jen, um, the design performance standard, if hopefully we get to that, that's the goal for residents, so. Um, I did re-go over the um, business designing standards and some of the questions here, on top to run down. Um, they looked at some things and discussed it, and as of right now, they might have changed a little um language or some. Um, spelling corrections, but they thought right now it was approved with from the town board. And if there's any concerns or things that come up from out of that, that they feel that it'd be addressed to bring it to the town.
And keep in mind, as you guys get projects, and you you uh apply the design standards, if you see a blatant hole. Pull it out, you know, I mean, I mean, we left the islands in, to be honest with you, because maybe one out of ten project needs it. But it's easier to pull it out than it is to.
Right.
Impose it.
To make, right.
Yeah, so we left that in, we can be, and we certainly aren't gonna.
Depends on commercial, where she was talking about residential.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the commercial stuff, if you see, you know, a reoccurring. Problem, just put a note to the town board with your approval, with your recommendation saying, hey, look at this section, this maybe we should change. It's a living vacuum.
Followed up.
You can, you can change constantly, it's not a law, so.
Okay, unfinished business, town engineer, we're long road, we're gonna leave them table, yes, we're working through the. Secret process, the consultant is working with all our peer review. Uh, teams in order to uh assist the board in uh preparation of its. Uh, next steps. Eighteen twenty-one Whitehaven, brackets, anybody here, you've had? They were supposed to send the lawyer, sent the letter, they wanted to talk to us, and then show up two meetings, now this is the third. Uh, do we wanna?
I'd say ta- take them off the list.
Want to take them off the list, how does that work if we take them off the list, do we have to reapply?
It's been. This is what, three months now, they haven't showed up, right?
I know, I'm pressed it down, I don't think there's. They hear the code that says. It takes after you guys inside.
Yeah, I mean.
Wanna give them one more table and then next.
Long road's been on there three years.
All right, let's just leave them table for this meeting, and have we sent to them? A reminder that their project is before the board and the next meeting date is Bexan, they're.
Did you do it, did you, have we?
I didn't do that.
Okay, I I wouldn't strike them off without giving a pass like that.
Let's send them a letter, but last meeting, they, their lawyer sent us the letter and said.
Well, there was, there was a guy, and I don't know who, there was a guy that was sitting in this, yes, at last meeting. And was there for a short time, and something came up because he was phone and agitated and got up and left, now I don't know who it was, and that might have been. Cause they were, keep in mind, they were unfinished business at the bottom of the agenda, we had a pretty good, long dialogue going on. I I I'm speculating that that may have been the person that left.
So we'll leave them on the meeting.
So at least give them a warning, you know, this is their final.
Sure, can, are you here for some, something particular, or you're?
That's where you left, just suck it all in.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I never met you, nice to meet you. And sir, you.
Suck it in.
Just listen in too, okay. Okay, motion to adjourn. Red and second by Tim, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.